Good morning and welcome to the August 2nd, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. It's also Budget Adoption Day, so it's very exciting here at the courthouse. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, since it is Budget Adoption Day and we have a lot of great discussions ahead of us, I'm going to keep my comments brief and invite our County Treasurer Linda Kazire to talk about an award she recently received.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am very honored to have received the National Award for the Outstanding County Treasurer for 2017. I was very excited. It's a national award for outstanding service in county government. And as I stated yesterday, everybody in Sedgwick County is outstanding. We all have our good things that we do. We have to struggle through some budget issues, obviously. Hopefully, you guys won't have too many of those today. But this honor is for the entire county. It's not just for myself. Because like I said to a couple of you Commissioners, we're like a big family. We're all brothers and sisters. We all work hard. We have our fights sometimes, but we always work through our issues and we continue on. And I'm very honored and very humbled to have received it and very thankful that I work for Sedgwick County.
Well, Madam Treasurer, we are pleased to recognize you and this award that you and your office received. You're very gracious in your comments, but we want you to know we appreciate your leadership. But out of 50 states, to have one county picked as the National Treasurer of the Year, I think is remarkable and worthy of note by us. And so congratulations to you and your entire office.
Thank you.
And we will accept your statement that we're all part of one family and we all get the award.
Thank you.
But congratulations again.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate it.
Also, yesterday was the first day of our Bulky Waste Coupon Program. You'll remember that this is free for residents of Sedgwick County to dispose of up to 1,000 pounds of bulky waste from now until October 31st. As the program started yesterday, I talked to Susan Erlinwine with Environmental Resources, and she let me know that yesterday we had 3,000 requests for coupons, which is a new record and very exciting about that. So there are a few more coupons left for our residents to take advantage of, and that is available now until October 31st to dispose of that waste. Additionally, this weekend, it's a great time to visit the Wichita-Sedgwick County Historical Museum and all of their new exhibits, especially the Civics and Government Exhibit, which we helped sponsor recently. And more information can be found at wichita history dot org. And finally, this is going to be our last meeting until August 16th, so no meeting next week, and we will resume next time on the 16th. That's all.
All right. Well, thank you for that introduction, Kate, and I would like to second your comments about the Wichita Historical Museum. It's really an outstanding asset in our community, and I'd encourage everybody to take the opportunity to go look at the new exhibit that we helped fund. So I want to welcome everybody that's here today for an important budget meeting, and hopefully we can come to some conclusions today after many, many months of preparation. But appreciate you all being here, both those who are in our boardroom and those who are watching by way of television. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, August 2nd, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Cindy Watson, First United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag, please.
Would you pray with me? God of all the universe and the nations, particularly God of this great state of Kansas and of Sedgwick County, through you, authority is given and laws are enacted. And we give you thanks for the wisdom and justice you offer our elected leaders, particularly our Sedgwick County Commissioners. Surround them with your spirit of discernment. May they always seek the ways of righteousness and justice and mercy and grace for all those who live in Sedgwick County. Grant that they may be led with honesty and integrity and grace. We ask this through your precious name above all names. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Watson, thank you for being here this morning. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Enry.
Present.
And next item?
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we've had two people sign up to speak on our public agenda, so we'll ask him to step forward, and first is Mr. Jim Burgess.
Thank you, Commissioners, for another opportunity to speak. You heard me Monday concerning senior citizens and funding for the senior centers. I just am here today to remind you that there are four senior centers in Sedgwick County that requested additional funding. Those centers are Bel Air Senior Center, Clearwater Senior Center, Mulvaney Senior Center, and Hayesville Senior Center. They achieved criteria that was set by the Sedgwick County Commission under the understanding that they would receive this additional funding when they achieved that criteria. Some of them have achieved it for as long as six years, maybe even longer, some lesser of a time, but they are, by the agreement, or this criteria that you set, eligible for that additional funding. So I'm requesting you to, again, consider the $73,000 additional funding request that we talked about on Monday, and ask that you honor the criteria that you set at that time. Thank you, gentlemen, for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. And the second speaker we have is Dana Milby.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Although I speak publicly for a living, I find myself more nervous than normal this morning, and I think that's because I now have a personal stake in the issue that's before the commission and that I want to talk to you about today. I live with my family in Rockford Township, in the far southeast corner of Sedgwick County. We've lived there for 14 years. When we first moved out there, our roads, we have primarily dirt roads, they were in good condition, but since then, they've decreased in condition significantly. Even with just a small amount of rain out at our home, I sometimes wonder if I'm going to be able to get to work because the roads are so slick. We typically, on average, replace a tire a month on our vehicles. My neighbors have had significant car repairs that they've had to make on their new cars as a result of the condition of the roads. EMS recently evaluated the condition of our roads and stated that they have serious concerns about whether or not they'd be able to come out to the residents in Rockford Township in the event of an emergency. I've had a sheriff officer tell me personally that if it rains on 87th Street, they will not come out. If we happen to get a more significant rain, which we have recently, in the last few years we've had a lot of rain in Sedgwick County, the conditions of our roads are much worse. Several residents testified at the last township meeting that their kids, both teenagers and grown adults, have rolled their cars, have totaled their cars, that school buses can't pick up the kids because the roads are too muddy, mail isn't being delivered, trash can't be picked up, kids have to call in at work and say that they can't come to work, or their parents have to call them and say, "I don't want you coming home because the roads are too bad. I don't know if you'll make it." In the last several years, our taxes have gone up 300 percent. That's our mill levy. Unfortunately, this hasn't resulted in an increase in revenue because the city of Derby has annexed the developments in our area as they are developed. The estimate to repair just the deferred maintenance on the road, the emergent needs in our county, is over a million dollars. It has become clear that our township by itself is not able to manage the problems in our roads, and we are asking for your help. At the last township meeting, the residents and the township board agreed that the most viable solution to solving the problems on our roads is an intergovernmental agreement between Rockford Township and Sedgwick County. As residents of Rockford Township, we're willing to pay the cost to repair our roads. The intergovernmental agreement will not create or be a financial burden on anyone outside of our township. But the intergovernmental agreement will provide the immediate and temporary help needed to fix the emergent repairs so that the residents of Sedgwick County who live in Rockford Township can get to and from our homes safely, so that our kids can get to and from school and work, and that our first responders will be able to get to us in the event of an emergency. So we appreciate your consideration.
Well, thank you for your comments. We have been alerted to the problems in Rockford Township, and there's some discussion on what the Sedgwick County's role might be in trying to alleviate those problems. But right now, we have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend Ms. Milby for coming to speak today. She's been very engaged in this issue. I have attended the last four Rockford Township meetings. I would just tell you that the interest from the community has continued to grow and grow, and the stories that she's referenced this morning, I would tell you, those are absolutely true. I hear stories from many residents. I'll tell you, I don't get phone calls on any of the other four townships in my district regarding the roads. I have had phone calls from Rockford Township, people there, especially when it rains, every time it rains, sometimes one or two phone calls, but sometimes it's five or six phone calls. It's a very, very large problem, and I empathize with what you're going through. I'll say thank you for making that clear to us this morning. I know we have an opportunity to consider this intergovernmental agreement. It's something we're working on. We'll have an opportunity to consider that probably fairly soon. It's my hope that we will be able to go in that direction, but it's also contingent upon the electors passing a ballot question, and of course, the township board passing both the intergovernmental agreement and the ballot question to the people to vote on. So a lot of things that have to happen for this to be successful. I'm hopeful that it's possible, and again, it's one of those things where it's not really Sedgwick County's at-large, it's not their financial burden, it's the Rockford Township people's financial burden, but what you're asking for is a little help with trying to fix things a little more aggressively than pay us back so there's no cost to the other taxpayers. And I know that, I think that's what you're advocating for this morning. So I'll say thank you for that. When I hear about public safety can't get to the homes, that's a pretty big issue. And I do know there have been lots of people who have had significant car damage. The buses actually declared they would not run to pick up children or drop children off. People are missing work. Mail's not getting picked up, or I'm sure not getting delivered, and trash is not being picked up. Again, it's not every day, but certainly when it rains, that's kind of where we're at. So this is a significant issue, and I want to say thank you for bringing that to our attention. Hopefully, we can move forward. And I also wanted to say thank you for Mr. Burgess for highlighting once again your arguments for senior center funding. We're going to have, I'm sure, a more robust discussion on that as we get into the budget issues this morning, so thank you for your comments. Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion to receive and file?
I think that on these public comment, we have not been taking a motion to receive and file.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It is on the record, however. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on general issues before we close this portion of our meeting? I don't see anyone rising to speak, so Madam Clerk, last you to call the next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2017.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes of both June 14th and July 5th. What's the will of the board?
Move to approve the minutes from June 14th and July 5th.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Aye.
And next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, resolution appointing Gilbert Alvarez to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board in the education position.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item C is an item that we can take separately, and the person is going to be here to be sworn, and then the remaining would be combined, I think, unless there's objection from the board. Item C is a resolution appointing Mr. Gilbert Alvarez to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board in the education position. You may recall that that position was held by Mr. Faplick, who resigned to move out of the community. So Mr. Alvarez would be filling the unexpired term of Mr. Faplick. He is filling out that term that will end on June 30th, I want to make sure I get this date right, of 2018, and he is present to be sworn. The paperwork appears to be in order, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to move that we appoint Gilbert Alvarez to the Board of County Commissioner Appointment to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Board in the education position. I've known Mr. Alvarez now for a number of years. He was Athletic Director at North High School when I taught there. He's been a principal at a couple of our high schools, most recently at Northwest, Home of the Grizzlies, by the way. I announced there, so I'm kind of partial. And he's currently the Assistant Superintendent for the high schools. I think it's a great appointment, and I'm very pleased to make that motion to appoint him. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Aye.
Mr. Alvarez, if you'd want to step to the podium, and the clerk will swear you in.
Hi. Have you raised your hand? I'll state the oath to you. Say I do, or I swear at the end, okay? I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. So help me God.
I do.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to make a move.
Just want to say thank you for this appointment to the board. I'm excited in this new position as Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools and the Wichita Public Schools to serve the students, the families, and staff, but I'm also excited to now serve Sedgwick County students and support them in this new appointment. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate your willingness to serve. Next item.
Item D, resolution appointing a member in the position of master electrician and reappointing members in the position of journeyman electrician, electrical engineer, and joint city-county public-at-large Board of County Commission appointments and reappointments to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, again. Items D, E, F, and G are all appointments to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, otherwise known as M, A, B, C, D. I'm going to try to combine all of those. I can tell you that for all of these positions, the terms would expire July 31 of 2019, and it's my understanding that none of these folks are going to be sworn in here, but are going to be sworn in at their own meetings. Item, we'll begin with Agenda Item D. The appointments being made there are, as your appointment for the master electrician, Mr. Dwayne Schneider, who is replacing Richard Kretschmar, who had to resign earlier this spring. Reappointments to this particular board are for journeyman electrician Casey Belnap, electrical engineer Tim Lenz, and to the joint city and county public-at-large position, Mr. Brad Ragland. Item E is also to the M, A, B, C, D, the positions, but it is to the Board of Code, Standards, and Appeals. And the positions there would be for the architect position, Mr. Greg Willhite, to the Class B contractor position, Mr. Randy Harder, the public-at-large position, Darrell Crots, and the person representing the real estate interests is Mr. Warren Willenberg, and the joint city and county Class A contractor position, Mr. Randall Coonrod. On Agenda Item F, which is the Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air Heating, the positions being filled would be for the master mechanical contractor position, Mr. Roger Lowenstein, the journeyman mechanic position, Mr. Ron Love, mechanical engineer Joe Samaya, and the joint city and county public-at-large position, Mr. Frank Rash. And then finally, Item G, which is to the M, A, B, C, D's Board of Appeals of Plumbers and Gas Fitters, the positions being filled are for the master plumber, which would be Mr. Kelsey Leidy, the journeyman plumber, position Seth Harrington, the joint city and county at-large position, Mr. Larry Doty. Those are our suggestions on appointments, Mr. Chairman. All their terms expire July 31 of 2019. Paperwork appears to be in order, and I would urge adoption of all four of these resolutions.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, for some reason, I have, I always seem to have an interest in these types of appointments. I'm surprised Lonnie's not here this morning. I'd love to ask him what he thinks about it, but I have asked a lot of folks about how these boards are working and kind of checked up on them a little bit, investigated, and find out are these boards smooth and things working just great? And the answer I get is yes. I know some of these folks. I don't know them all, but I have, I think, vetted all these appointments, so I am very pleased this morning to make a motion. We would adopt the appointments or adopt the resolutions for Items D, E, F, and G. These are some great folks, and I appreciate their service to the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on all these appointments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enry.
Aye.
Next item, please.
New business. Item H, adoption of the 2018 Sedgwick County Budget and the Capital Improvement Program.
We had four different opportunities for citizens to engage us. Once the recommended budget was presented to public hearings, an online public hearing, and for the first time, a social media town hall. Out of these opportunities for engagement, we received a total of 13 comments. If you remember, that this budget focused on the priorities listed in our strategic plan. I have worked to balance the increasing demand for essential county services within our available resources. The recommended 2018 operating budget for Sedgwick County totals $407,276,187. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $137,441,377, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils. The Sedgwick County's five-year capital improvement program includes updates to the adult detention, EMS, and correction facilities, administration building and main courthouse remodel, an elections building that meets Homeland Security guidelines, funding for additional ADA compliance, replacing county roofs and parking lots, continued investment in the Mitch Mitchell floodway, maintenance on roughly 100 lane miles per year in repairing or replacing an average of 10 bridges per year, and the strategic bonding of certain projects for road and bridge work. As stated earlier, the 2018 budget totals of $407,276,187. It will be supported with a property tax levy of $137,441, excuse me, $137,441,377, which will require a mill levy of approximately 29.359 mils. Every budget recommendation I made was with the intent of preserving the county's sound financial condition while moving forward with the priorities outlined in our strategic plan. To do this, we had to have a great team. This year, we used the executive team as we reorganized last year. They were a big part of the process, between myself, David Spears, the ACM for Public Works Facilities Maintenance and Project Services, Tom Stoltz, the Deputy County Manager, Tim Kaufman, the Assistant County Manager for Public Services, and also the communications team of Katora Austin and Kate Flavin. But really, the big budget team. I also want to mention Jessica Osmeier. She had a part in this, too. But really, the budget team headed by our new CFO, Lindsay Poe-Rossow, the Deputy CFO, Rick Durham, also Lorian Showalter-Ari. And although she's not here because she gave birth, I wanted to mention that Kami Carleston was a part of our budget team, as well as Carly Sanchez, Brandon Mills, and Kate Flavin. I already mentioned her, and Todd, where are you? And Todd. So really, it was really about a team. If you're a part in the budget team, could you please stand? Go ahead. Everybody in finance, stand. That's here. These are the masters that really got us to this position, and the 802-page document that sits in front of you today and has prompted us to have this discussion day for you to pass the budget, hopefully, by the end of this meeting. Thank you, everybody. Please take your seat. Commissioners, if there are any needed changes to this budget, of course, myself, Lindsay, and Lorian are here to help you through them. Thank you very much. Look forward to the discussion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager, and I believe at this point, without another portion of formal presentation, I guess, Commissioners, it's time for us to discuss our priorities and what we want to do with the budget. And I think Lindsay's getting in position to answer questions.
Only if necessary. I'm going to run Levy Live for you.
Okay. So Commissioners, is there any comment, questions, as we go through this process to adopt a If there are no comments or questions, then we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if you're going to go out to public comment again now that we're on the agenda item. I'm not sure if there's anybody else that wants to speak this morning.
Well, I think we need to have a motion and comments from us.
Okay.
Publix had four opportunities, I think.
That's fine.
So thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure before I went on. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments and maybe some motions here, so if you'll please bear with me, I would like to do that now. I apologize for not stapling these. There's two sheets each. If you guys would like to take a pair of those sheets, that'd be great. That shows what Sedgwick County has given to senior centers in terms of performance measures. I believe about 10, 11 years ago, when this was developed, between the county and many seniors, I think, that had an interest in this. I know there's a lot of effort was put into this, but essentially, I look at this as somewhat of a promise. I think that someone made a comment that, you know, this is contingent on whether there's funding available, and I would argue with the increases in funding in this budget on a number of items. I think that this year, we actually do have an opportunity to make a correction on something that's been going on for quite a while. Again, I think as a previous speaker... Again, I think as previous speakers, Mr. Burgess said this morning, some of these senior centers have had, the performance measures have been hit for as many as six years. I've heard one of them maybe as long as eight years. I think we heard that last Monday evening. With that in mind, two of these senior centers are in District Two, that's Clearwater and Hayesville. Each one of them, actually Hayesville, I think, is eligible, according to the sheet, to receive an additional $22,000, if I understand correctly. And Lindsay, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but Clearwater, I believe, is eligible for another $17,000. Mulvane, another $17,000, and I believe Bel Air, another $17,000. I understand there's, I think there's two senior centers in Bel Air. One of them has applied for funding and has provided performance measures, and the other one has not done that. So we don't know what the other one may be doing and whether or not they're both needed or if they have any interest in merging their efforts. That's something they can certainly discuss. But the one that has given performance measures and has measured what's going on there and has requested funding is the Bel Air that we have been dealing with. And so collectively, these four senior centers, again, one in District One, and one in District Five, and two in District Two, collectively would be, do $73,000, would be full funding for those three, those four senior centers to be made whole, according to the agreement we made with them about 10 years ago. With that in mind, I'd like to make a few other comments. I think the reason senior centers are important, a couple of things. They're intending to monitor the health and well-being of these seniors that associate with these senior centers. They check up on them, they do home visits, they make sure they've got grab bars and wheelchair ramps if necessary, they socialize together, they do eat together. Those are some things that kind of keep the seniors engaged in their communities and active. But on top of that, they do things like help them with Medicare supplemental insurance applications, they help them with their income taxes. These seniors, as long as they can stay independent and in their homes, that's the good, that's the best position for them to be in. And to the extent that they are not independent and are not able to stay in their homes, they end up in places like our community nursing homes or on Medicaid. And so they become something that taxpayers get involved in one way or the other. This senior center funding, in my opinion, is well-intended to keep these seniors independent and engaged in their communities as long as possible. And I think, as Speaker said on Monday night, we had a number of speakers who made some comments, and I think numbers of them made comments about how the aging population continues to grow. And I referenced a WSU study that shows over about 80% increase in 62 and above in our, of that population, 80% increase between 2010 and 2030. So we, I think we all would agree that the senior population, as a population, is increasing. Obviously, there's some levels of inflation, there's assessed valuation growth. We have not increased funding to senior centers for a very long time. I don't know how many years it's been, but it's been a long time. So I think it's his time for us to move forward and do what we said we would do. Again, I've handed out what I consider to be the performance measure sheet, and it arguably, you know, basically outlines what's needed for certain levels of funding. And should we not fund this this morning, I think maybe the discussion ought to move maybe today or another day into what to do with this agreement, because the agreement is what's driving, I think, my motions this morning. So I would like to make a motion this morning, Mr. Chairman, that we would transfer $73,000 out of the operating reserve budget to the Division of Aging Senior Centers Program and allocate the funding to senior centers based on senior center standards. Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? At this time, I will say that the motion fails for lack of a second.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. And I anticipated that might happen, but I would encourage you all to please consider the comments I've already made, but maybe, maybe part of the problem is the exact motion that I made. I would make a different motion then. $60,000 right now is inside the Economic Development Fund. Lindsay, please share with me how much money in 2017 we have not spent, or in 2016 that we have not spent that's in the Economic Development Fund.
In 2016, we didn't spend roughly 1.4 million of the Economic Development contractual budget.
Okay. And this year, it's probably around 1.0 to 1.1 perhaps?
Correct.
We anticipate we're not going to spend. And I know there's been some discussion about funding some of the things in the community like the USS Wichita, that is something that Commissioner Dennis cares greatly for. There's a few other items, I think, that are along that line, that some Commissioners, you know, I think they value some of those priorities, and maybe they would move some money out of the Economic Development Fund for some of those things. Again, I would argue this is, in a sense, an economic development item. So I will tell you, I will share with you, I am, this may seem like a negative comment, but I know we, we have been funding our SCED program, roughly $60,000 per year. I personally, I don't know my colleagues, but I'm still, right now, not in favor of funding $60,000 for SCED. That's maybe a future discussion, because we're not allocating that in this budget. But to the extent there's $60,000 in this budget that would potentially go to SCED, I would like to make a motion this morning that we would transfer $60,000 of the budget authority from the Economic Development Contractual Budget to the Division of Aging Senior Centers Program and allocate funding to senior centers based on the Aging Advisory Board recommendation. Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a question about that that maybe Lindsay can answer. Is that a, is it possible to move money out of Economic Development to the senior centers like that?
Yes, sir, because this would be in the general fund, and we can transfer that budget authority out of the Economic Development General Fund budget into the Aging General Fund budget.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I definitely want to see the senior centers get money. I think that the formula needs to be addressed. I had two senior centers in my district that came to the meeting the other night and have since followed up with me about it. But I do think it's something that needs, needs more discussion, because I do think that the formula is a, is a little bit antiquated at this point. And so it's a, it's a tough position for me personally on how to move forward. But I think it's a discussion that I would like to have with the Department on Aging before I move forward, changing policy at the bench on that particular issue. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau.
Yeah. Lindsay, you said we had budgeted how much wasn't spent from last year, 1.2 million?
Last year was approximately 1.4 million of the contractual budget.
Of budgeted. What about forecasted?
Last year, we did not spend the Economic Development Incentive Budget Authority that we had forecasted, because the terms of those agreements weren't met.
So the budget amount of 1.4 million can be a deceptive number, because that's budget authority, doesn't necessarily mean there's money there to support that.
Right, forecasted authority.
Then the forecasted, okay. And I just want to, I've got some information here from staff that I think is important to enter into the record. I understand that the senior centers issue, as far as the levels that we've established, I've long, long thought that we need to change these levels and rearrange what we do. Somebody said yesterday, and maybe it wasn't yesterday, it's all running together, the last public meeting, that there were some unfening mandates. I think there are. I think we need to look at reducing or eliminating some of these unfening mandates within the requirements here to free up some money. But I think it's important for everybody to see the big picture. If you look at property tax-supported community services for the elderly that we do here in Cedric County, there are 15 different programs that we give money to. Senior Centers is one of them. 15 different programs, and we give a total of 1.3 million dollars. Senior Centers get 630,000, which is about 49% of all the mil levy funded money that goes to community services. But they're also the last priority of the 15. So I'm going to ask this be entered into the record, and if anyone wants a copy of this, there are, so there's 15 different organizations. The lowest priority, which is the senior centers, not to say it's not good and don't do things, but they're not as high priority as the others, it still gets 49%. I think that's pretty good. I think, instead of increasing the funding there, I think staff's position is that if we had extra funding, we should give those higher priority programs that initial funding first, like nutrition, or roving pantry, or commodity distribution, or Cedric County and Home Program, medical, critical needs, transportation, you know, there's a variety of things. So it's not, I think people need to keep in perspective that we give money to, for these programs, to the tune of 1.3 million dollars for a variety of things. And that's, that's what we as Commissioners have to do. We have to look at the entire budget, not just one specific one, and try to be fair to everybody. I think the 14 other programs that are higher in priority could make a, a point that perhaps they're getting, you know, less, less funding than what they should, because they, while they get 51%, I mean, one program, the lowest priority, gets 49%. So that's not to say I don't support the senior centers, but I think we need to keep things in perspective, and that's why I'm not supportive of making a change here today. I do think we need to reevaluate the requirements and standards from senior centers at some point as we move forward, and make sure that when we allocate this 1.3 million dollars, we're keeping in mind all of the programs and trying to do the best we can to be fair to everybody. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to point out, out of these 14 other priorities that are listed here, I don't think any of them have a predetermined agreement with the county Commissioners like the senior centers do. This chart I handed out this morning is unique. Amongst the 15 priorities, this is the only one that's got an agreement in place that requires performance measures with promised funding. And again, the funding was contingent upon our ability to make that funding possible. I think our budget this year arguably has the funding in it to do this. I'd also like to make the point that out of these other 14 priorities, may make a couple of comments, nutrition programs. I think senior centers administrate nutrition programs. In fact, they, when they socialize amongst themselves, one of the things they do together is they eat, but they also hand out, they do the Meals on Wheels program and they congregate meals there in the nursing, in the senior centers. The pantry, roving pantry, I think they provide help to seniors that have needs for food in their homes in other ways. Commodity distribution, transportation. I think the senior centers are aware, if someone needs to get to the doctor, they'll find a way to get them there. They coordinate people, the volunteers, with people with needs. Health screenings, they do that. Maybe not funded directly, but they do a lot of these things on this list. And again, the senior centers, that's exactly what they do. That's why they're needed. Again, so without those services to the seniors that the senior centers are providing, a lot of these other things would have a greater need, because they are actually doing these things naturally. So, once again, the one thing that makes the senior center funding unique and different is that we do have an agreement with them, and should we not fund this this morning, I don't know what, what we fall back on. It's not for lack of funding availability, that's not the argument. Once again, we've got the funding in our EcoDVO fund that we're not going to spend this year. We haven't spent it for the last two years. And so we have the funding available, that's not the question. It's just willpower to fund the thing that we agreed to 10 years ago, and arguably is doing some great things in our community. So, Mr. Chairman, my motion stands. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, just for clarification, was the motion for $60,000 out of the Economic Development Fund, which would be money from SCED?
Well, to answer the question, we're not making a decision on SCED today, but I do know that, right now, I do not have an interest in funding SCED out of the EcoDVO budget. And by the way, some of the things they do are the macro loans. We can talk about that later on, but the other thing they do is weatherization and basically mobility, basically safety things inside the home, grab bars and things like that. I would tell you that I think the senior centers are also doing, also doing that. They're very aware of trying to keep people in their homes independent. So if I was going to spend $60,000 to do something like that, in my opinion, the senior centers are much more effective of knowing what those needs are and providing essentially some of that similar work. But I've asked SCED for details exactly how does someone get on that list, and I have got a lot of questions on SCED. And right now, I am not convinced that $60,000 is what we should be spending money on with SCED. I can explain that later, we can talk about that more robustly later on, but today's not a, today's argument is not to not fund SCED necessarily, but I would make an argument later on, that right now, at least right now, I don't have an interest in funding SCED. And that $60,000, we don't need to put it in the Economic Development Budget specifically. And so if you guys would agree with me later on, then we can certainly have that discussion. I'll make a motion later on if we don't fund SCED, if that would help. That's my interest, is I don't want to fund SCED, and I'd like to see this $60,000 go to senior centers.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Howell, I think has made a very good argument on a way to fund the senior centers. I wasn't at first sure how he would do it, but this, this does change my, my position, and I will give him a second on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. I would just say that I think the South Central Kansas Economic Development District provides a good service to our region. It's an organization of 14 counties in the area, has support from all other 14 counties. They can list you where they have helped citizens and programs that are beneficial. And I just, to me, it doesn't make sense that 14 counties have been working in consort together to do good benefits and help small companies get micro loans to start businesses, and now, all of a sudden, we're going to say, well, SCED's not worth it. I reject that argument, reject that comment. And so I will not be supporting the notion that we take from SCED for senior centers, and if it comes on a standalone issue, I will still be supportive of SCED. And if we need more information, they have a new executive director who came to our staff meeting once, talked to us, offered to give us information, and I believe it is a, I believe it's beneficial to South Central Kansas and the 14 collaborating counties that work together. So those are my comments. We do have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't be supportive of this motion, because if we do this, then we're going to skip over 14 other programs that are of a higher priority in the same category, simply because I know we have this formula here that we've developed, and I would argue that is the problem, is the formula, and that needs to be changed. So I'll make a substitute motion that we tabled this motion and discuss changing the formula in the future to better address the needs of senior centers in our community.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on a substitute motion to table the fundamental motion for discussion at another time. Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear on the motion, because should this substitute motion pass, does that mean that I cannot make another motion for funding senior centers a different way and a different amount?
I, that's the way I would take that motion. The intent of that motion is that we take this up, the whole formula of funding for senior centers at another time. Is that correct?
Well, I think that would be the best approach, myself.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to further comment. I believe Commissioner Norton, when he was here, I'm trying to remember the details exactly, but I think it was not during a budget cycle, he made a motion. We discussed this formula at a staff meeting. I raised the issue, said we need to look at this formula and figure out if this is a fair way to distribute allocated funds. I would much rather, if I had my choice, I would much rather appropriate dollars to the Aging Advisory Committee and let them help determine how that money should be best used. But let us appropriate dollars. But to the extent we have a formula, and again, we promised, performance measures, we would fund you to these levels. To me, that's where we're at today. I raised the issue of many of that formula, and I was warned that you don't want to do that. There was a lot of consternation, a lot of discussion, a lot of emotion went into getting this formula in place, and should we want to open that can of worms, it's not going to go good, not going to go well, excuse me. And so I'm reluctant to do that today. Commissioner Norton, again, not in a budget cycle, but I think it was between budget cycles, made a motion to fund senior centers, and I, I'm trying to remember, I think it was seconded by a Commissioner, and I believe it failed 3 to 2. I have to go back and look at my, my data, but I believe that's what happened. And one of the comments I made at that time was, not that I don't support senior centers, I voted no that day. I wish I'd have voted yes. But I voted no that day, my argument for that was that it's not the budget cycle, we should do this during a budget cycle, when we have a chance to look at all the other funding priorities, and this is the time. Right now, we've got all the budget in front of us to look at, to decide whether we can afford, we can forecast this and plan on this funding. This is the time. And to table this puts us right back into the non-action mode. I have no faith that we're going to change this formula, or that we're going to come back and actually consider funding sometime between now and budget cycle next year. So this is the time. We need to have the bravery to do what we said we would do, either that, or... We need to have the bravery to do what we said we would do, either that, or, again, should my motion not pass, by all means, I, I hope that you'll keep your word and you will intend to open up that formula and fund it to some level in the future. I do think that my experience is when you tweak formulas and that type of thing, that we have a no, hold harmless intent. So, I don't think anybody who's due funding today is going to see a reduction in funding side, reductions in funding, I would, at least I would hope not. To me, that makes it very difficult to pass. I look at the schools finance formula from the state level, for example, there's usually a hold harmless effort so that no one would lose funding when you move from one formula to the next. And so, in my opinion, the conservative thing to do and the right thing to do is to keep our promise today and fund the $73,000. I would urge you not to support tabling this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I want to make one clarification. When we established criteria for senior centers back when the formula was first established, we said this is a criteria that should you meet them, you would be eligible for more funding if it was available, and if that was the intent of the commission. The word "promise" is a stronger word, I think, than was ever used at that time, and it should be used now because we didn't, we didn't promise. We said, this is a formula, you meet it, if you qualify for the next level and money is available, then, and the commission decides, then we will fund you at a higher level. So, that's, that's the language that was used. "Promise" was not a word that was used. Commissioners, are there any other comments? We have a motion to table this issue and have staff discussion at a later time to see if we want to change the formula or how we might change the funding schedule. Is, is that a reasonable recap of the motion?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And we have a motion and a second for that. This is a substitute motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
So, the substitute motion prevails, and this discussion then will be had at a, another So, Commissioners, we're ready to continue with a discussion of budget considerations. Commissioner Howell?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to talk about senior center funding, although I do have a motion I had prepared, I guess I will not offer. You guys were very clear on that. You don't want to talk about that today, so that's fine. I do want to talk about storm drainage. It's another issue that it's plaguing districts two and five. I, I think every district actually has problems with storm drainage. I don't think that two and five are the only districts that have this, this issue, but we have done a number of studies, and we've identified at least about a half a billion dollars in projects that need to be, either, either we need to fund them somehow and move forward, or we need to, I guess, decide we're not going to do that. Really, that, that question comes from, really, a will of the people, not so much the commission or, not just the board, but I think a will of the people to develop a, a, a long-term revenue plan to do that. Unfortunately, I don't have the details on how we would, on how we would develop this, but I would tell you, I, I had a very good discussion with manager of the city of Derby as well as the manager of the city of Mulvane, and they suggested jointly, I met with them and a number of staff from here, here in Sedgwick County, and they made the observation. It's really not so much, but we need to have more projects defined, although there may be other projects we could define, that's really not the biggest need at this moment. The bigger need is to figure out how to solve this problem. And they would suggest that we would do a study to figure out whether or not there's a will among the people, how that would be funded. And so, I think we have some work to do and to solve this problem. I can't hone, I can't determine exactly the dollars, so I'm going to make this somewhat generic. Again, we, we do have operating reserve. We could fund, we could do an RFI and a RFP at a, at a later time and get those things defined, and should the commissioners want to go forward, we could pull money out of the operating reserve. But I guess, just to make that very clear, that it would be my, my intent today to transfer a little bit of money, just to make it very clear that there's, there's an intent, I guess, to solve this problem, not just a Band-Aid to do some small amount of work, but to do something basically to solve the half billion dollars or more problem long-term. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to transfer $200,000 of budget authority from the operating reserve to the storm drainage contractual budget to be used to fund a study of long-term funding solutions for flood control projects in Sedgwick County. This may not be the exact right amount, but I'm sure that we would spend that, maybe a little bit more. So, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be happy to support that motion if it was actually going towards drainage projects. From what I understand, and Mr. Manager or David Spears might be able to confirm this, but we have a study that still is alive and needed to, we need to do the projects in the current study, from what I understand. So, going out for another study, I think, is what a lot of citizens hate about government, is that we spend so much money on studies and consultants, and we actually don't do projects. So, I'd like someone from staff to let me know about the last storm study, storm water control study.
Commissioner O'Donnell, David Spears, Assistant County Manager of Public Works. What we have is a list of over $200 million worth of projects. So, we have a list of projects. What we don't have is a funding source to do those projects. So, the Storm, the SMAB, Storm Water Management Advisory Board, they've been meeting for over ten years, and there's been many studies done. What we are working on right now is, we have contacted Johnson County, and they have agreed to come here and speak to us about how they do that. They had a similar problem, and they had a sales tax approved that's dedicated to storm drainage. We are, we've talked to them, in fact, this week, and what we're trying to do is arrange a meeting, maybe like out at NCAT, invite every city in this county and anybody that's interested to come to that meeting and learn about how Johnson County did it, and, and the possibility that we might try to do it the same way. Otherwise, I mean, we have been spinning our wheels, as you might say, for the last ten years, unable to do anything significant with these projects because we simply do not have a funding source to do it. So, that would be my comments about the storm drainage.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And, Mr. Manager, is, are you not making an effort to get with other city managers and county managers in the area to get input from the staff side? And what is a good process, and what are suggestions to attack this problem?
I've talked to actually several managers about this, including Kathy Sexton from Derby, but we talked about using the, the Managers Association, not only for the counties but the municipalities to come together to actually be the ones to help generate the plan, the ideals on how we would get this, you know, approach this problem of finding a revenue stream, what those ideals are. David getting Johnson County, certainly the managers will, managers need to be a part of that discussion, but I think the, that the managers are clearly where we need to come together and unite to be able to, to bring recommendations to our leaders to help, you know, help in this area.
And, and then, as far as immediate practical action to try to solve this, we have added in the recommended budget $350,000 to add people, a couple of personnel and some equipment to do a more aggressive attack on our drainage issues as far as cleaning up creeks and so forth in specific areas. So, it, in light of the magnitude of the problem, that's not, I know it's not a lot of money, but it is something, and we're doing it, and we know from past experience, cleaning up those creeks has done a very significant job in helping relieve the flooding.
Correct.
So, I'm pleased that at least we're make, taking that step to increase our effort there, so.
But we attacked it in different fronts within this budget. Obviously, we allocated, as you said, more money, $382,000, not only for two more FTEs or two, two more crew members for the stream maintenance crew, but also equipment, including backhoe, you know, vehicle, fleet charges, et cetera. That, that totals about, like I said, $382,000. But we also allocated, in terms of the solid waste fee, if you remember, money towards a stormwater contingency of $250,000. And so, last year, when we had those big storms, there were, there were many opportunities where if we had that fund, we could actually provide some assistance that we really hope this, this could be used for, for that immediate need. That's really how we could affect it off of our budget. So, we are providing more, and as, in terms of operational support and time of need, we're ramping up that capability. We're also providing, David, the ability to increase his capacity and capability to clear out streams throughout the year that will help in times of these flash flooding events that really, if you have a lot of debris in these streams, clog up the drainage pipes and really cause problems for, for the whole county and different municipalities. That's how we can, we can do it without having a larger funding, funding stream. We would have to dedicate a lot, a lot of money, and that on top of, not to mention the $1.1 million we already spent on the Wichita Valley Flood Control Project, just an ONM cost, and then another almost a half a million in just construction projects on the, on the Flood Valley project, infrastructure improvement. So, we spend quite a bit of money this year, it'll be over $2 million, just in flood control and maintenance.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. I think Commissioner Dennis hasn't spoken yet on this issue, so let me call on Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Flood, flooding is an issue in District Three. We've got flooding issues up around Bentley. Ever since the Halloween flood, we've had major flooding concerns out in western Sedgwick County between the Cowskin, the Catskin, the Dry Creek, and so forth. So, it is something that I've been concerned about for some time. I did have some discussions with our, our manager earlier this week, or late last week, I guess it was. And he informed me that, that the different managers from the different communities here in Sedgwick County have been meeting, and you did indicate to me that at that time that it would be, as I recall, something around $60,000 to start a study rather than $200,000. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I think for us, I think $60,000 would be more than enough to, to actually craft a plan on how to, how to, that's probably more than enough.
And, and you indicated that would be Sedgwick County portion, but more would go into that because other managers were going to commit some funding to it also?
Well, as, as far as the effort, if we put money in and there's more needed, then I would certainly approach the other managers and municipalities to help if we needed it. I just think $60,000 probably would be more than enough.
Okay. Well, therefore, I, I would really ask the maker of the motion if we could modify the motion to provide $60,000 and let the manager work with the other managers to help solve this problem.
Thank you for the, may I, Mr. Chairman, you want to wait to, wait, wait for a minute?
Yeah, Commissioner Howell, if you want to respond to that in a minute, but I'm not trying to ignore you, but Commissioner Ranzel hasn't spoken yet, so let me call on Commissioner Ranzel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. I, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. I would be willing to support this if it, if it, well, actually, I would prefer that it's a stormwater drains contractual and kind of leave that open-ended, whether it be for projects or a study or whatever. I've heard some discussions, you know, I, I'm not convinced we even need $60,000 to do the study because we have organic personnel, you know, so, I'm open to the idea of having that conversation, but I, I don't want to necessarily make a specific determination with respect to that money today. I do think if we don't use it for a study, there's some stormwater drainage issues that we could, you know, put the money towards. So, I would support even $200,000 for a general stormwater contractual move. So, that's where I'm at, but I think we have a mixed match of, of positions here, so. But I want to get that on the record before you responded to him, Commissioner Dennis, so, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just to be clear, I understand the comments of Commissioner O'Donnell. Again, another study to develop more projects, I think, is, is not what I'm interested in right now. We, we know, we have plenty of work to find, and I think to spend more money to, to find more projects is, would be essentially wasteful at this point. We, we know we've got plenty of work to do. The biggest question is to, is to find out how to do that. Again, to, to the extent we can do this, a little bit here and a little bit there, as our manager Scholes has defined, you know, I appreciate the fact we're putting more money into this this year. We have the will this year, I think, because we've been hammered over the last year and a half or so. Many, many homes in my district have been flooded as a result of some of the infrastructures not, not in place to handle the floodwaters. We're not in a good position right now, and I know that when we're in the middle of a drought, we talk about water supply. When we have floods that are, floods that are damaging our homes, we talk about storm water. The challenge is how do you keep the, the momentum and, and the issue alive outside those seasons that come and go? And that's why I think a revenue stream that's dedicated is an answer. And again, if there's not a willpower from the, from the people for us to solve this problem, that is fine. And, and no is a good answer, if that's what the people want us to do. Yes is also a good answer. I think our challenge is, is listening to the people to find out what they want, and we've not listened to the people. This is not just managers speaking, but actually the taxpayers and the constituents and the, the communities that are being impacted by the floods. We need to hear from them. And so, I've talked with some of these folks and say, you know, to do a small internal study is probably not something I'm in, I mean, it's a step in the right direction, but it's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about doing a, a presentation amongst many communities, neighborhoods, cities, to get their input to what they want and develop something that is seemingly, you know, a solution that's supported by all the folks we talked with. And I'm not sure you can do that with $60,000. I, I just don't know. It's, it's hard to know exactly. We tried to get some estimates on, on what the study would cost, but we're not able to get those numbers, and so unfortunately, I don't, I don't have that. Lindsay, may I ask, if we were to make this transfer today and we didn't spend that money because we, we said we overfunded this, what would happen to the unspent funds?
Since it's in the general fund at the end of calendar year 2016, the budget authority would just lapse.
And it so doesn't hurt us to transfer the money that's in excess of what we would actually need for this purpose?
Not within the budget. It could potentially have an impact on your forecast, though, in your long-term deficit.
And, let me ask, if we transferred $60,000 and we needed to have more dollars, we would still have availability to go back to the operating reserve and, and fund additional dollars if we needed that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I think I hear from listening to my colleagues, at least some of the, some of them said they would support $200,000 as long as it was for projects, or, or could be used for projects and possibly other things, contract, storm drainage contractual, in other words, more generally defined. At least one of them said that he would support $60,000 for the purpose of trying to figure out the how. So, I guess I have a decision how to, how to amend my motion. I guess I would like to say, to me, the study is the important part here. I, I would really like to, to, I guess, commit to do, to go in in the direction to figure out what, how to solve this is the most important thing here. So, I would like to amend my motion. It's the same motion. I would, I move we transfer $60,000 of budget authority from the operating reserve to a storm drainage contact, contractual budget to be used to fund a study of long-term funding solutions for flood control projects in Sedgwick County.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Procedurally here, this is the only motion with a second on the table. First motion did not get a second, is that right?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, so this is the motion on the table. Motion and a second then to transfer $60,000 from operating reserves. That has a net effect then of just increasing our deficit spend.
Correct.
And, and yet, at this point, this $60,000, we're not even sure what we're spending it on, if I understand it. Is that right? I mean, we, we don't have a structure, we don't have a project, but we're just going to increase our deficit, you know, approve a greater deficit spend. You know, I, I'd be more likely to be supportive if we said, okay, we've got this group that's going to meet, and they need this much money, and I'm going to fund that money. Or I would be likely to support it if we said, these are three projects, it costs about $60,000 or whatever, and I could support that. To move $60,000 for unspecified, let's try to fix a problem, it, I just, it doesn't, doesn't sit right with me. So... So likely, I will not be supportive of the motion. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we've got a couple of different points of view, and I understand your point of view on not having a direction on where the money is going, but I, if we could clarify that to say that this money is what's going to be used by the managers within Sedgwick County to decide the direction of flooding in the future, something along those lines. If we amended the motion, would you be more inclined so that we do give direction that this is going to be used directly by our manager with, in conjunction with the other managers within Sedgwick County and with promises of the other communities also contributing to this? Would that be more palatable?
That is more palatable. It's still, I don't like the idea of increasing our deficit spend, but in our, in our world, $60,000 is not a, not a big number. But if I knew that we were saying, okay, we're going to move 60, and this is how it's going to be used, I'd be more likely to support it.
Thank you.
So is that, is that the motion?
I don't know. I didn't make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll, let me read the motion again and see, I guess, make a couple of comments. So the motion was that we would transfer $60,000 for budget authority from the operating reserve to storm drainage contractual budget to be used to fund a study of long-term funding solutions for flood control projects in Sedgwick County. So again, this is trying to define the how. Again, should we hit a brick wall and there's not support from amongst, amongst communities and people we speak with, I think we're done. If there is a funding stream that is, that the people seem to want to support, that, again, I, I've looked at this before, there's at least four solutions that I have, I have had presented to me from some of our staff. In my opinion, I'm more interested in those that have voter approval. I anticipate at some point we would develop a proposition that would go out to the people. They would simply say, yes, we want you to do this, or no, we don't want you to do that. But to the extent we would, we would develop a proposition of a long-term funding stream to create infrastructure to solve this problem over time. And how we do that is what I'm trying to figure out. We need some money to figure this out. With our existing staff, with our existing workload, there's just not going to be enough, in my opinion, there's not enough momentum to actually go solve the how of this problem. So we need to make this an intentional thing to go, is to go find out how to move forward. So again, if I was to add some words to that, Commissioner Dennis, I don't know what I would add exactly, because to me, that motion is pretty, pretty defined already. It's about Sedgwick County, it's about studying a long-term funding solution for flood control projects in Sedgwick County. That's very narrow. I don't know how I can make it more narrow to make it pleasing to the other commissioners here today. So make a suggestion, I'd be glad to amend my motion, and I'm not sure exactly what to add to that.
Commissioners, if I could, since we've talked about economic development, having some forecast authority there for special projects and other things, that might be a way to do a transfer. If you remember our discussion yesterday, a transfer within this file will allow us to just simply transfer a forecasted expense from one place to another, and so it would increase the overall deficit. So we could change the motion instead of having it come from the operating reserve, having it come from the economic development contractual budget, and that could essentially get us most of the way there if it's $60,000. I'm not sure we could do the same thing for $200,000.
Okay, so we, excuse me, so we would be reducing the balance in our economic development money?
Right.
And I'm trying to understand what we're voting on, $60,000. And this study would be for, or, it's not, we're not funding a study, right?
More of a plan.
We're understanding, we're funding an effort.
It's more of a plan than it is a study.
Okay. And this is going to be supposedly countywide?
Correct.
I mean, it's not just for one particular portion of the county?
Correct.
Okay.
Countywide, involving all managers, city managers and county managers.
Madam Clerk, is that the issue? Is that the motion you've got down? You got that?
I believe Commissioner Howell would need to speak on this again.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
All right. Based on the discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my previous motion and make a different motion. Would that be okay?
I think that'd be great.
Okay, great. I would move we transfer.
Withdraw a second.
All right, thank you. I would move we transfer $60,000 of budget authority from the Economic Development Fund to the storm drainage contractual budget to be used to develop a plan for potential long-term funding solutions for flood control projects in Sedgwick County.
Okay. Excuse me, okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Do we need more discussion, Commissioners? All right then, Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
All right, we have made the transfer. Okay, what's, Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know I don't have any more motions. She might enjoy that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any more? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Lindsay, based on our conversation, does there need to be any more motions regarding the mail budget for the election commissioner?
Only if you want to take any action from the bench to restrict how that mailroom budget is used. But because it is in the IT budget, it is under IT's purview.
Do you have some language that, that, based on our conversations, might be necessary?
Yeah, we can face through the lines of due protection here.
All right. Thank you, Lindsay. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. I move that we require any print requests for advance election ballot flyers to be specifically authorized by the Board of County Commissioners before any such work is performed by the Sedgwick County Print Shop staff. That's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman, or, excuse me, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have one other motion, and I will say that this motion, we have a very good salesman with Commissioner Ranzau on the commission, but I move that we eliminate the project manager position associated with the Health Division Community Health Assessment Program in the 2018 budget. I move that we transfer the general fund budget authority for the position to the operating reserve, but leave the budget authority associated with the position in the Health Grant Fund in place.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be supporting this motion. I think the position is a valuable position. I think that, and I have read the health assessment, and I think there's some problems in our current health assessment and the way it was drafted. The fact that there are problems in it doesn't mean that we can't manage that and make sure that it meets the needs of the citizens in Sedgwick County. So I think the position is valuable. I'm not sure that I appreciate the way that the previous health assessment was drafted and some of the recommendations that came out of that. So I don't want to kill the whole thing because I don't agree with what was written. I think that that's our job as the managers and the manager's job to make sure that it does meet the needs. So that's the reason that I would be voting against that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be supportive of this motion. I think we can meet the needs of our community with respect to health department data with existing personnel, and I'd be willing to work with staff and the managers to ensure that that happens as we move forward. The current plan has really become a political, politically motivated effort and document, and in the long run, I don't really think it's, it's helpful for a variety of reasons. But I do think we can do what we need to do as, as the Board of Health to collect the data with respect to health, health issues in, within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Lindsay, a question, is that position funded by grants or is it funded by general fund?
It's funded half and half between the two funds, general fund and health grant fund.
And, and what is the total amount?
The general fund portion is $35,985. The grand total is $71,969. That includes all of the benefits, like health insurance and labor taxes as well.
Okay. So the total cost to our taxpayers for this, to our taxpayers locally for this position is a little over $35,000?
Right.
Okay. Well, I'd make, you know, this health assessment, this community health assessment and working with people in the community from the medical community and from other community groups, they may come up with conclusions and recommendations that this commission is not wholly in support of. But the best way for us to influence that is to have a person on the committee, to have our representative there, someone that we can give direction to, that we can put under our authority to try to advance the perspective that this commission supports. I think to be involved in the community, conversation as the Board of Health is something we need to do. The cost certainly is not oppressive at our, at a cost to our folks of $35,000, but, so I, I will not be supportive of the motion. I think we ought to be involved, and that's the way to influence, protect ourselves and achieve what our goals are as the Board of Health. So withdrawing that person from the, from the conversation, to me, doesn't, it seems to be counterproductive, so I won't be supporting it. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the motion. Can you please read that, read that to me one more time, please, for the maker of the motion?
The motion was to eliminate the project manager position associated with the Health Division Community Health Assessment Program for the 2018 budget. I had moved that we would transfer the general fund budget authority for the opening, for the position to the operating reserve, but leave the budget authority associated with the position in the Health Grant Fund in place. And the reason why I wanted to leave that money in place is because I hope we can develop a better program, a program that doesn't advocate for gun control, a program that doesn't attack the Topeka Legislature, a program that doesn't get into areas that are not only out of their territory, but also an affront to many of the principles that we all campaigned on and believe in. I spoke with a couple of people about this, spoke to Becky Tuttle, that is kind of a spokeswoman for the group. There was offensive language in that, to me personally. They did remove that, but that just showed me that there's a lot of, a lot of room for changing that. And let's stick to improving the health of our community. Let's get out of the political bomb-throwing and areas that are not the business of this group. Talking about Topeka tax policy, talking about Topeka education policy, talking about gun control, talking about sex education, talking about a lot of these things that got into that community health improvement program, even went so far as attacking the work programs that the state has put in place so that people on welfare can get education. They should want that instead of attacking it. We need to start asserting our authority as the Board of Health, and we need to start talking about health, in, health programs and ways to do that without becoming a political Thank you.
Do you think Commissioner Howell still has a floor?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just say that, you know, I think in 2015, I, I supported not funding the position, and then I, I did change, and later on, I did decide to fund that. I think the compelling argument for me was that we are the Board of Health, and I think it's reasonable that we would have our finger on the pulse of health trends in Sedgwick County, and I think that's a good, that's a great argument. But if I understand the motion, and I think comments from Commissioner Ranzau, it's not that we're not wanting to know those things. I think we do want to know what's going on in Sedgwick County. And whether we can do this with existing staff or there might need to be some supplemental funding for some staff to do something outside the normal existing workload, that sounds like that money would be available based on the way the motion was made.
Yes, sir.
So I, I think that, again, the, the community health assessment is a three-year cycle. I don't think that that's a good cycle time for us to keep our pulse on what's going on in Sedgwick County. That's too long of a period. I have read the last community health assessment, a year ago, they were in the process, if I understand correctly, of finishing up the three-year, the third year of a three-year cycle, which was another compelling reason why I wanted to support that. We invested two years, we wanted to get the third year done, which is them developing the, the plan, if you will. But reading that plan, I am extremely disappointed. It is, it is, as Commissioner O'Donnell said, it's a political statement. They're advocating for Medicaid expansion, gun control, sex education, in a way that I think that people would be alarmed. There's a lot of things in there that I think are very much just political statements, and they're not necessarily based on actual data that we collected from actual people in our community. In fact, if I understand the process, which is defined in the community health assessment, there's people who use sticky notes on a wall to develop the major tenants of the plan. It wasn't necessarily based on data that they collected. I think what we need to do as a Board of Health is actually collect real data and keep our pulse on what's, what are the health trends of Sedgwick County, and we can do that outside the community health assessment program. And I think we need to do that. I'm very supportive of the idea that we would, in fact, keep our pulse on the health trends of Sedgwick County. I want to know how obesity changes or how smoking is changing or infant mortality especially. I care about that one greatly. There's so many things that are going on in our community. We ought to be aware of what's going on, and if there are factors within our control, we can have those discussions. But the CHA, in my opinion, is not the way to do that. It has unfortunately become a political effort, and that's not something I can support today. So I appreciate the motion, and I will be supportive of, I would quite to support that today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell, did you want to make more comment?
No, no.
Okay. I think I made point.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we've already heard three that are going to be in favor of this, but I still want to say why that I would oppose the motion and I'll be voting in opposition to it. And truly, I agree with what Commissioner O'Donnell said and Commissioner Howell said, that there are some political statements in there and some things that I don't agree with. They even went so far as talked about they wanted to have Metropolitan Area Planning Commission change the zoning codes so that we don't have off-street parking out in the suburbs, which in my area, we're not going to ride bicycles from where I live downtown to where we work. So it's got a lot of, I, I agree, it's got a lot of political statements in it. The, the survey, if you went through and read all the survey questions, we had some pretty good survey questions in there. Unfortunately, I think they went off track a little bit when they got involved in some things that were beyond the survey and beyond things that we ought to be looking at. So again, I think that that position is going to work for our county manager. That county manager works for us. If it's not meeting our needs, we need to figure out a way so that it meets our needs rather than throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I think that's what we're doing if we just say we disagree with it. And I think probably all of us would agree there's things in there that we don't agree with, that it went political instead of staying on the health assessment portion of it. But I don't want to, I don't want to say that we're going to just forget about that because we are the Board of Health for Sedgwick County, and I take that responsibility very strongly. So I'm going to vote in opposition to that, and I'm not saying that I'm voting in opposition because of the comments that were made, because I agree with a lot of the comments. I'm voting in opposition because I think that we do need some kind of an assessment of the health of Sedgwick County so that we can do our job as the Board of Health. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I, I guess I would want to make my position clear. I, I agree with the comments of my colleagues on the deficiencies and the, some of the, some of the things included in that health assessment that we just totally disagree with. And it has become some, well, more than somewhat political, but I don't want to give up my seat at the table. I want to, I want to still be represented. So we have a motion and a second, is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Would you please call a vote?
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
No. All right, that modification to the budget's been made. Is there anything else? Okay. Commissioners, any other? Commissioners, any other specific items of budget that we need to discuss before we go to a motion on the budget in general? Mr. Ranzau, do you want to make a? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ranzau?
Well, I appreciate the dialogue, the discussion we had today. I don't have any motions with respect to levy live, and I don't think anybody else does, I don't think. I am, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget itself, with the exception of the, some of the CIP, as we discussed with staff yesterday, if that would be okay.
I think that would be fine. Would you make that motion?
I will, and before I say that, I want to say that, as with any budget, I can't say I agree with everything in the budget. I don't think any commissioner likes everything that's in the budget, but I will say that we've made significant improvements in the financial outlook of Sedgwick County over the last few years, and this budget improves our outlook with respect to some of our deficits, projected deficits in the General Fund. I mean, it's better than it has ever been since I've been here in six years. I will say, I think some of the budget cuts we made a couple of years ago, which were controversial, in my opinion, helped us get to that point. We made some tough decisions that made it easier to get to where we are today. But nevertheless, we have to continue to be vigilant every single year, and the managers work hard to control the budget, but at the same time, increase salaries as much as he could and address the variety of issues that he's found since he's been in here. So I'll be supportive of the budget in general, although I do have some issues with the CIP, which is why I want to make the motion that I made. So I'm going to move that we adopt the resolution for the 2018 Sedgwick County budget that includes an operating budget of four-hundred-and-seven-million-two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, and the 2018 Cash Funding Capital Improvement Program of seventeen-million-four-hundred-nine-thousand-four-hundred-ninety dollars. The total operating budget is partially funded with property tax levy of one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-million-four-hundred-forty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, which is approximately equivalent to twenty-nine-point-three-five-nine mils based on the assessed value, based on the estimated assessed valuation subject to the review and technical adjustments. I don't think I messed up any numbers or anything in there.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion, but this is my very first budget cycle that I've been through, and I really do appreciate Lindsey Oliver's staff, everyone that was involved in it, keeping us informed along the way, leading me through this, making sure that I knew what I was doing, and understanding exactly why we were doing different things the way we did. So with Lindsey, all of her folks, the manager, I want to thank you very much for helping me understand what we were doing, and I'm very pleased to second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the motion. Please, Commissioner Ranzau, can you please describe once again? I tried to listen to you, but I wasn't sure which one of these motions you just read. Does your motion include the CIP or not?
No, it would be, if you've got the blue sheet, it would be the middle motion, adoption one.
Okay. Since your motion's already been seconded, I will be supportive of the motion. I would like to say, you know, I did my best to make changes to the, to the budget, make compelling arguments, but sometimes we don't agree on some of those things. That's fine. I respect and appreciate my colleagues' opinions and positions on things. That's totally what we should do. These discussions are healthy. I do think it's time to commend our staff. They did a tremendous job this year, really since the very beginning of this year. They've been working on this budget, even late last year, working on this budget. It's a very long process to put together over eight-hundred pages of very technical information, and they did a tremendous job. I want to say I appreciate them very, very much. There's always reasons to vote no. I could find reasons to vote no today. Rarely do I find something that I want to vote on that's a hundred percent something that I love. Usually, there's things mixed in there that I don't love, and so it's a, you know, it's easy to vote for something with a few things in there that you don't love. It's also easy to vote against something because of those things you don't love and miss an opportunity to support the things that are good. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to support the budget this morning and the motion, but I wanted to just explain that I don't like everything in here, but I do appreciate the staff, and I think it's time for us to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments, but before we go to vote, I don't see anyone from the general public that might want to speak before we vote. I don't see anyone rising to speak, so that being the case, Madam Clerk, we'll ask you to call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ranzau, I turn to you. Would you like to make another motion, or would you prefer someone else make?
I think I'd prefer somebody else make a motion.
All right. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I move we adopt the resolution authorizing the addition of the bond-funded and externally-funded portion of the 2018 Road and Bridge Capital Improvement Program totaling forty-one-million-four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars to the Capital Improvement Program included in the 2018 Sedgwick County budget.
I will second. Do you want to speak, anyone? Okay. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will not support this particular motion because some of the changes in the CIP, we've had an ongoing discussion about what level of bond funding and cash funding there should be for cash projects. I think we all agree there should be some level of both. This agreement is as to what level. I think this swings the pendulum back too far. I think, you know, this year, we had, I think, around eleven million dollars of cash funding projects. Next year, we're going to have around two. That's a delta of nine million dollars that, and I wouldn't say that we need to have eleven million dollars worth next year, but I would have hoped that we would not have decreased it that much, because we get in the area of funding some things that in the long run are better funded with cash as opposed to bond, although there's certainly a need for bond funding on some things in the future. I'm just not comfortable with the amount, with the balance right now in that CIP, so that's why I desire to separate those out and to vote separately on this. That being said, I'll echo my fellow commissioners' comments about the efforts on behalf of staff and the county manager. We truly do appreciate it. We know you guys work hard, and we ask lots of questions. Lindsey wears out a pair of shoes, I think, walking up and down the hall, answering all our questions, and so we appreciate it, but I think you've got five commissioners up here that will ask questions and try to do their due diligence and bring their viewpoint, you know, onto the budget and be active in that. I think that's good. It ends up with some votes that are split, but I think that's okay, and that's good, too. And in the end, we get to where we are today, and I think, as I've said over the last few years, we have significantly improved our financial position, although there's always work to be done, and we can't, can't get lackadaisical or anything like that, but I'm very happy and pleased with all the work by staff, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I see no one else asking to speak, and I would like to add my thanks to the Budget Department and all the staff for their extra work in answering lots and lots of questions and giving us lots of alternatives in our decision-making process. So you're truly, you're truly appreciated, so thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the Capital Improvement Budget. Would you please call a vote?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No. I'm kidding. Yes.
So that's an aye?
That's an aye.
Thank you. Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Aye. I don't know if I can, I'm speechless right now.
So am I, Chairman, so am I.
Commissioners, thank you for this work on the budget, and I think it might be appropriate at this time for us to recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the Board of County Commissioners setting as a governing body of Fire District One so that we can handle that budget issue. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Enrew?
Present.
Next, we'll see. I guess next item is public agenda. We have no one rising to speak at that, so please call next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Regular Fire Meeting Minutes of July 5th, 2017.
Commissioners, we've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there additions or corrections? What's the will of the Board?
Move to approve July 5th minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Excuse me. Next item.
New business. Item B, Adoption of Resolution Expressing the Property Tax Policy of Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners as the Governing Body of Fire District One with respects to financing the annual budget of 2018.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Poulousso, your CFO. Before you this morning is a funding resolution for the 2018 Sedgwick County Fire Budget. State budget law states that a resolution is necessary when a levy of property taxes to fund the 2018 budget exceeds the levy of property taxes to fund the 2017 budget as adjusted to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for calendar year 2016, with the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, generally considered to be a measure of inflation. The statute also calls for a variety of adjustments to be included in the calculation, including new improvements to real property, increased personal property valuation, property located within added jurisdictional territory, and property which has changed in use. Per state law, if the Commission as governing board of Fire District One intends to adopt a budget with a property tax levy that's greater than the computed limit, a funding resolution must be adopted prior to budget adoption, which is next on your agenda today. Assessed value in the district is estimated to increase by 4.5% for 2018, while the CPI adjustment allows for growth of only 1.3%. The levy included in the 2018 recommended budget is sixteen-million-four-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-one dollars, based on an estimated tax rate of eighteen-point-four-one-four mils. Under state law, the limit without passing a resolution would be sixteen-million-two-hundred-sixty-thousand-five-hundred-sixty-seven dollars, a difference of about one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand dollars. Even if the rate is reduced to the estimated tax rate for the 2017 recommended budget of eighteen-point-three-seven-one mils, with a levy of sixteen-million-four-hundred-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-thirty-eight dollars, the levy would still exceed that maximum limit by about one-hundred-sixty-thousand dollars. Adopting this levy, though, does allow the Fire District to make up some ground that it lost during the Great Recession. So should the budget today actually be adopted with a property tax levy that's greater than the computed limit, statute directs that notice of such vote be published in the official county newspaper within the next two weeks. I'm happy to address any questions you might have. Otherwise, I recommend you adopt the resolution and authorize publication if the budget is adopted with the levy in excess of the computed limit.
All right, thank you, Lindsey. Commissioners, what's the will of the Board? I would move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
That's at eighteen-three-seven-one.
Pardon me?
That's at eighteen-three-seven-one.
No. That's a different deal.
That's before.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Lindsey. Next item.
Item C, Adoption of the 2018 Sedgwick County Fire District One Budget.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager. The 2018 operating budget for Fire District One totaled seventeen-million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-six. The recommended budget will be supported with a property tax levy of sixteen-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-one, which will require a mil levy of approximately eighteen-point-four-one-four mils. However, as Lindsey just talked about and we discussed yesterday in the staff meeting, the Commission may choose to lower the target mil levy to eighteen-point-three-seven-one mils. Members of the public had two opportunities to come to public hearings on July 19th and also on July 31st. They were also invited to participate in the social media town hall or leave a comment in the online forum. No one spoke to this budget at either meeting, nor did anyone comment online. If there are any changes needed, Lindsey and Lorian are here to assist and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to make, but I just want to ask Lindsey a question. The target mil levy for this year, 2017, was eighteen-point-three-seven-one.
Right, that was what was included in the 2017 recommended budget.
That was the target for this year. I think the will of the Board, after discussion, is to make, have that the same target as opposed to increasing the target a little bit, and so I'll make a motion to keep this levy target the same from this year to next year. I move that we reduce the property tax levy included in the 2018 Sedgwick County Fire District One from the published amount of eighteen, sixteen-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-one dollars to sixteen-million-four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, which is approximately equivalent to eighteen-point-three-seven-one mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments.
And I. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And I will say, I think that it is the intent of the Commission that this be the target level from here on out unless we specifically say otherwise. I don't think we're going to do a formal resolution, which is fine, but the intent is to give some assurance or some, I guess, to the taxpayer that this is the same target level. Obviously, the assessed value may change, but the mil levy won't change from one year to the next, and I appreciate the help on staff on this as well.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to reduce the mil levy to eighteen-point-three-seven-one. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the motion, and I'll be supporting that this morning, but I just wanted to make a point, that this is really not, although it is a property tax reduction, that's really not the motivation, I don't think, at least not for myself, although that's great that we're doing that. The amount of, the amount of property tax reduction here is almost, is almost, it's just not a significant amount of money. In fact, for a hundred-thousand-dollar home, it's about four cents per month, so it's really not the point, and that's not the message I want to, that's not the message I hope that people would, would hear, but I hope to hear the message that we've essentially drawn a line in the sand. We're going to use a, the same target year after year, same target we had last year, same target we'll have this year. Hopefully, that's what we have going forward, and so, just like the regular budget, twenty-nine-point-three-five-nine mils for Sedgwick County budget, now we've got a target for the Fire District. And so we're being consistent by making this change today, and that's why I'm supportive of it, but it's not so much, the message is not the four cents per month tax cut. When we made that change to the Sedgwick County budget, I think that message got lost in the way it got communicated out to the public. They didn't hear that message very much, and so to me, the most important thing here is that we've drawn a line in the sand. We're going to use the same mil levy target rather than accept a technical adjustment as our new base each year. And to me, it's just a different way of doing things, and I like the way we're doing it now, and I'm very supportive of the motion this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, just to clarify, I would say, this really is not a tax cut. This is holding everything steady. The eighteen-point-four-one, it was the proposed amount, has not gone into effect, and I didn't think, I don't think it's the intent of the Commission for that to go into effect, so we're not going back and reversing anything. We're simply keeping it the same. In fact, I think the overall taxation in the district is going up because of the assessed value, but we are giving some assurances to our taxpayers that the mil levy target will remain the same year after year, although we don't know exactly what the mil levy will be until we get those technical adjustments. But it'll be reasonably close to our target and what it is this year, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Now, we still need to do the budget for the Fire District, so Commissioner Ranzau?
I want to make a motion that we approve the Fire District budget. I'll also want to commend staff on the Fire District budget. I think I voted against the Fire District budget several times, I don't know how many, because I felt like we kept kicking the can down the road. can down the road. Now, this year, we're making significant changes to the budget for next year, and I appreciate the manager, Tom Stoles, Fire Chief Lindsay, and everybody else. I probably don't know everybody that was involved in trying to come up with some long, some, actually, asked for some short-range plans and some long-range plans to try and address our budget deficits. We've made significant progress, although I know finance isn't still totally comfortable. We're not totally out of the woods yet, but it has significantly improved, and we've, we've made the efforts that we need to do. And I know we still have some work going forward, but I am happy with the progress that we've made this year, and so I will be supportive. I'll move that we adopt the resolution for the 2018 Fire District One budget that includes an operating budget of $17,957,696. The total operating budget is partially funded with a property tax levy of $16,420,138, which is approximately equivalent to 18.371 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation, subject to review and technical adjustment.
I will second the motion. Commissioner Dennis?
Oh.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen. We have approved the budget for the Fire District. I see no other business for the Fire District at this time, so we will adjourn the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners setting as a governing body of Fire District Number One, and we will call back to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for August 2, 2017. And Madam Clerk, what's the next item, please?
Item I. Reconsideration of Board of Bids and Contracts Items.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Back on July 12 at the commission meeting, we brought to your attention two items that were recommended by the Board of Bids and Contracts of July 6 and identified as items four and five. These were pertaining to the abatement and demolition of the Judge Rydell Boys Ranch. And so, at the will of the commission at that time, it was to defer both items for further review and also some pending additional information that you would want to look at. And so, it's been requested at this time that we return with a reconsideration of these recommendations, and so I'll read them into the record again. First item is the asbestos abatement, Judge Rydell Boys Ranch for Facilities Project Services. And this recommendation is to accept the low quote for major abatement and demolition incorporated in the amount of $88,500. Note that the funding is also contingent on the approval of the CIP amendment that'll be presented in the consent agenda. And the second item was the property demolition of the Judge Rydell Boys Ranch Facility Project Services. And this recommendation was to accept the low bid from H. Escavating LLC in the amount of $128,500. And this as well has the funding contingent on that consent agenda approval item. And I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Well, thank you, Joe. Commissioners, do you have any questions? We've discussed this at length over a long period of time and seen these items previously. If there are no question or comment, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, who do we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts?
Thank you. Is there a second? I will second the motion. So, we have a motion and a second to take the recommended action. Is there any discussion?
My light went out.
Oh, good. No.
I've been sabotaged. Well, I won't be supportive of this motion, even though I suspect it will pass. There continues to be interest. I talked to a gentleman this week in that facility. But the use of this facility, which I think would be very good, is, is complicated by the fact that we took the grant by the federal government 50 years ago for $7,100. And so, we have essentially relinquished control of that land, which complicates this issue significantly. And I have been working on that issue and will continue to work on that issue regardless of what happens here, but my position remains unchanged. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My light doesn't work either.
Well, I guess something happened. All of our lights are off. Commissioner Howe?
Yeah. Thank you for the chance to speak, and I apologize for interrupting, but I do want to, I guess, make some comments. I suspect this will also pass, and I do respect my colleagues and I appreciate your opinion, and you certainly have a right to vote any way you want. And I respect you in that, no problem. But me personally, you know, this is just an issue. It's just sad. To me, it's just a sad ending to a tremendous piece of our history. We've done some great things out at JRBR. I don't feel like we've run the course. We've not hit, we've not hit the brick wall. We've not hit the end. If I understand correctly, Congressman Estes is still working on it. We were not able to get a resolution by today. The contractor that's bid this, I believe, he's very, very patient. He's not asking for us to, to vote today, I don't think. It sounds like when we talked to him about the three-week extension, he was very gracious and agreeable to that. So, there's not pressure from the contractor to do this today. And to the extent we've not hit a brick wall or hit an endpoint, again, should there be some grace from the big government of our state or our federal government to allow us to use this facility other ways, this is a multimillion-dollar facility. I think the repairs have been overstated. It needs to have a roof repair. It needs to have a new sewer line. The boiler works. It is an antiquated styled facility, but it has a lot of value to certain parts of our community. I can imagine, maybe, maybe this is just me dreaming here, but homeless men going out there to get off of their substance abuse issues and getting some job training and get resumes and some clothing, and we transport them back and help them get jobs. We've got hundreds of homeless in our community that would benefit from something like that. They don't need a fancy facility. They need a place to go. And this is a taxpayer-owned facility. It's been there for over 50 years. It's done a tremendous amount of good things in our community. I'm not, I'm not ready to bulldoze it yet, to the extent that we've not finished asking the questions and getting the answers. And so, to me, this is still premature, and for that reason, I'm going to vote no today. And I would just say again, once again, I do respect my colleagues. I appreciate, we all have our own vote. I hope that you'll respect me as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, after our meeting in July, two different groups reached out to me. Two different groups went out there and toured. I appreciate Tanya Cole setting that up. They went through. Both of these were nonprofits. I had told both groups that if they were interested in the property, then I'm sure we could come up with a lease agreement of virtually nothing for them to get out there, as long as they brought that building up to code, as long as they were able to enter into this agreement, understanding they weren't going to own that property, that we weren't going to be selling it to them, but we'd give it to them virtually free. Both of these groups, one of them does it across the country. Both of these groups realized that there's too much work to that facility. It was overwhelming. And like I said, the one group that's out of North Carolina, they do this in, I think, eight different states, and they just, they don't see any, any, any way to move forward with that, with that property. And I find it unfortunate because I was really hoping that with that last-ditch effort, we would find a user for that facility. We are at a point now that this has been going on for three years, I think, looking for a user for that facility, and the property condition has only degraded over that time. It's become more of a liability, and since it isn't in our downtown footprint or in a reasonable area for us to use it for other county functions, it's, it's with a lot of consternation and obvious hesitancy on my part, but I will be supportive of moving forward today on this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your last comments, Commissioner O'Donnell, that it's been a lot of effort, consternation, thought, different iterations, ideas, and it seems like we're at the point now this decision needs to be made. And so, I, I guess just want to say a personal note. When I graduated from high school in 1960, I worked on that building when they were putting it together. So, I've known of it for a long time. I won't do the subtraction to see how many years that is, but it's a long time ago. But I had the opportunity to work on that building, have been aware of its value to our community for all these years. And like my colleagues, this is our decision. We don't want, you know, we don't want to do things frivolously, and especially with property that's had a big value to our community. But I think now is the time to make a decision. So, I'm, I'm ready to go forward. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we have a comment from Commissioner, thank you, Joe. Have a comment from Commissioner Ranza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we're at a place where I hope we wouldn't get, but I did want to talk about the efforts on that Congressman Estes are making on our behalf. They obviously weren't able to get anything done to stop this. I think it's difficult. I mean, they're aware that we had a mixed opinion on the commission, and that's, it's hard to get legislation pushed through. But that being said, I did talk to their office yesterday. There is still a possibility to get legislation that would remove the encumbrance from Lake Afton altogether. I was told that it would be very helpful if we, for example, passed a resolution that was unanimously voted on to, to ask the federal government or Congressman Estes to, to help us with this issue, that that would go a long ways in helping getting the legislation passed, because the people at the, on the committee at the federal level would want to have, know that everybody agrees down here that we want to remove the encumbrance altogether. It won't save JRBR, but it would solve us from having any problems in the future with respect to Lake Afton. I told him that I thought we probably would be unanimous in support of that, but perhaps in the next staff meeting, we could talk about that. I could work with legal to work on the resolution if necessary, and so I would like at least to have that discussion moving forward. I want to share that with the Commissioners to let us know we can still probably, hopefully work some good out of this and, you know, if we want to move forward on that issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that I can say confidently that we can direct staff to go ahead and start preparing that resolution, and we'll take it up at the next meeting, our next meeting, because I think we're all in agreement. We would like to not have the federal government restricting us. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I just wanted to let Commissioner Ranza know that not only would I be supportive of that, but I had lunch with Congressman Estes two weeks ago, and we talked about this issue. He understood that we would probably be moving forward with the demolition of Judge Rydell's Boys Ranch and understood the caveats with, with those decisions. However, the, the other policy decision would have been if we hadn't got that encumbrance taken away, and we would have sold that property. And I think that was another obstacle, because I think a lot of, I think there's many of us on the commission that don't want to sell off parts of Lake Afton Park, regardless if the Boys Ranch was still in use or just flat grassland. I don't want to sell parts of our county parkland regardless. So, that's why I let the congressman know we would still probably be moving forward in the, in the direction that, that we just went on that last vote. So, thank you.
But, so I'm clear, Commissioner O'Donnell, you would support efforts to remove that restriction?
Right. I would love to get rid of any encumbrances we have, whether it's that at Lake Afton or the, that dumb restriction we have out of the land in Furley or anyplace. I, the federal overreach is, it's astounding. So, I would love to, love to remove as much of that as we can. And, and nobody's better than Commissioner Ranza of leading that charge.
We all agree with that. Commissioner Ranza?
Couple of commissioners already have brought up the land in Furley. I asked about that. We have several other encumbrances. Their recommendation was is that we do this with Lake Afton first, since we'd have an incident, and they all know about it. If you get that through, if that goes through good, then we could look at bundling all the remaining ones together and trying to address them together, but still on a separate piece of legislation later on. And so, I did have that conversation with them, and that was the recommendation. So, that's why I recommend the way that we proceed.
All right. Very good. Well, we'll start with Lake Afton and hopefully be successful on the others also. Okay. We are now ready for the next item.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, recommend you approve Consent Agenda items Juliet through Sierra.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. We would approve items Juliet through Sierra with the exception of item M. Mary?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent with the exception of item N. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe, do you want to make a comment now on item?
Well, yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to speak once again. Just to be consistent, what item M is, is a CIP amendment to defund the demolition of the JRBR facility. And to be consistent, I just do not want to add my support to that CIP amendment. So, I expect my colleagues to support that, which is totally fine. I just don't want to be on record of supporting that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend one of you make a motion, and we'll vote.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item M. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Next item.
Legislative issues.
And I think we have nothing to discuss there. So, Commissioners, we're ready for other. If you want to make comments about things you've been involved in, I don't see anyone asking to speak, so we don't have an executive session. And so, we are at the end of our agendas. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Anything else, Commissioners? Then we will be adjourned, and thank you all.